I know that we're ready to roll at 8:30, so.
Yeah, jet lag, huh? Car lag, there you go.
Okay, is everyone ready? And again, welcome, Dr. Johnson, and welcome to those who are here with us today. We appreciate your interest as we move into our interviews for the position of the superintendent of schools in Escambia County. I also want to remind anyone that's watching that we have provided an opportunity for you to engage in this process. Tonight, there will be an opportunity for members of the community to share questions. And all day today, as you're watching, there's a button on the website where you can submit questions for each of the candidates or for all of the candidates. And tonight, at the virtual meet, the candidates, those questions will be asked, so you can participate in this process with us. At this time, I'd like to ask all the people in the room to silence their electronic devices. And also, I would like for us to rise for the pledge of allegiance, and Mr. Fetzko is leading.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, I'd like to introduce my board members. To my far left, I have to keep my, is Mr. Kevin Adams, District One Representative, Dr. Laura Edler, District Three, to my far right, is Mr. Paul Fetzko from District Two, and Mr. Bill Slaton from District Five, and I'm Patty, High Tower Board Chair, from District Four. We have with us today, I think our staff people are out with our other candidates, but we have in the room, we have members of our search team, we have Ms. Messina here, and we also have the presidents of our unions, both here, Darzel Warren and Dave Elsbeck. And then we have in the room also, a former school board member, Jerry Boone. Glad to see everybody. And here, we have Dr. Earl Johnson, who is going to be our interviewee. I want to go over the schedule and how we're going to proceed. We have ninety minutes for the board to interview Dr. Johnson. We will give him the opportunity to give us about a five-minute opening statement. Then each board member will ask a series of thematically-based questions, operations, business, finance, et cetera. Each board member is allocated fifteen minutes and is prepared to ask up to five questions. The number of questions, of course, each will get depends on the length of your responses. And you will have time at the end of our questioning to give us any final thoughts you have, ask us any questions you wish to ask us. So if there are no questions from my board about the process, being none, we'd like to invite you to have your opening statement. And thank you so much for being here with us and being willing to be our superintendent. Can we hear you?
Hit it again.
Hit it again. Is it green? Tech support's coming.
Yep.
Your time will not start until we get this fixed.
I hope that's a good thing.
That's much better, thank you.
Madam Chair, school board members, it is a privilege for me...
It went out again.
It's a privilege for me to have this opportunity to come before you to be considered as an applicant for the superintendent in the Escambia County School District. I know that it is going to be one of the most, if not the most, difficult decisions that you have to make. Going from an elected superintendent to an appointed superintendent brings on a lot of different decisions that need to be made. As an appointed superintendent, it's important that the superintendent and the school board members communicate, communicate, and then, when you think that I'm not around, communicate again. Have a shared vision, work collaboratively together, to have a strategic plan which will be conducive to our students being successful and productive citizens in our society. In April, when I found out about this position in March, and there were a number of positions opening, openings in the state of Florida, I only chose one district just to go visit and see how that district was. In April, my brother and I got in our car. And we came to Escambia County. Because the county is like the county I grew up in. Very diverse communities. We have rural, urban, suburbs. And I was one of those kids that grew up poor. It was, um, at the time... I'm sorry. After I read about the district and looked at the demographics, it reminded me of how it was when I grew up and the neighborhood that I grew up in. I grew up during the beginning of integration. And when I was in first grade, that was the beginning of integration, and they bused students from certain areas to go to different schools. And I was, I had the middle school, elementary school, and high school within a mile from my home. And I was bused to Seabreeze High School, Seabreeze Junior High, and Artona. But those were the best years of my life, because I was exposed to situations and environment that I never knew anything about. When I used to ride on the bus to go across the bridge and see the homes with garage doors opening without people pulling them up, because in our neighborhood, that's what you did. That's what you did. But that experience was the best experience I had. And when I came to Escambia County, I knew this was a place that I wanted to be, because it reminded me of where I grew up. And I want to go on record to say this and congratulate Escambia County School District for a successful opening of the week. We opened up in Flagler County also on Monday, and congratulate you on a successful opening. And I would like to honor the faculty and staff for their commitment to the students and the families here in Escambia County. This is a very unprecedented time, a time that I have never seen in my thirty-two years of working in Florida schools. We have been through a lot, hurricanes, tornadoes, floodings, but nothing like this pandemic that affected the entire United States of America and this community. This is a time we need to unite, trust one another, work together, and you come together and be very empathetic to the diverse needs of our students. This is a time that we need to understand and unite. When you look at the packet that I gave you, this is just a draft. And when I put unite here, I did a little acrostic with that. And unite Escambia means by unifying, being novel and innovative, through teamwork for excellence, that is what I will do as the superintendent of Escambia County School. And I'm excited to be here, as you can see.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you so much. At this time, Dr., Mr. Adams is going to begin the questioning with the area of human, well, actually, operations, we'll just say operations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if I need to repeat it, just let me know.
Yes, sir, if you don't mind, sometimes I can get all of the information, I like to jot notes as you speak.
Well, that page?
No, just, just...
Okay, all right. Number one, first question, what would be your plan for retention and recruitment to increase the number of qualified teachers in our classrooms?
That's a good question. One of the things as the Executive Director of Leadership and Operations in Flagler County, I am over HR, we do have a chief HR director, however, I'm overseeing HR. First of all, one of the things that we did in Flagler County, we had our own job fair. We had a job fair within our district, and that was two years ago, was the first time we stood that up. And we did not have it this year because of obvious reasons. And we had seventy-five potential candidates who came to the job fair. And of those seventy-five potential candidates, we hired seven new teachers. Here in Escambia County, you, this is a gold mine. You have Troy State two hours away. You have the University of South Alabama one mile away. You have Florida State and FAMU just east of us, where my money for my daughter has gone to both of those schools. You have the University of West Florida here, and you have Pensacola State College here. We would do a concerted effort, a very intentional effort, to go out and hire highly qualified, high-quality teachers and a diverse group of teachers to meet the needs of our students. Now, once we bring those candidates in, that's not enough. Because when we look at the research, we understand that teachers do not stay in this profession long. Why? Because the lack of support they feel that they're receiving from the administration or the lack of support and resources they're receiving from their peers. What I would do and contend is we have a program, as we had in one of the districts I worked in, we call it Peer Assistance Review Team. And you have something similar to that, which I think is called Successful Teachers Assisting Rising Teachers. You have that program. And we, what we did is the exact same program. We pulled those high-functioning, those high-effective teachers out of the classrooms to be this peer mentor for these students, for these teachers. And it could be one year, it could be up to two years, and they will have multiple teachers that they're going to mentor. And we use the Daniel's model of our evaluation tools in both of our school districts, and those peer teachers go in and work with those, those rising teachers to not evaluate them in terms of their evaluator, but giving them constructive feedback, because we know that the most important part of evaluation is the feedback. So I would do that in terms of retaining our teachers, and we need to make sure that we're providing those teachers with the resources necessary.
Number two. What degree do you believe responsibilities can and should be delegated to principals? Is the first part of the question. And how would you hold them accountable for accomplishing those responsibilities?
First of all, I was a principal in a high school, in elementary school. I was a principal for thirteen years. And I am a firm believer that the CEO of that building is the principal. However, as a school board in a district, we all have to have a shared vision, a strategic plan that each and every one of our school-based administrators know about. And so that's how they're going to lead. So the responsibilities that I will give to a principal is the ability to lead their school with the shared vision of a school board and the superintendent. Did I answer the...
Yes, you did, thank you. What experience do you have managing capital and operating expenditures? Is the first part of the question. And the follow-up is how familiar you are with different fund types, and what would your priorities be for capital project resources currently available to our district?
That's a multi-question.
Yeah.
What was the first piece?
The first part was what experience you have managing capital and operating expenditures?
Okay, as the Executive Director of Leadership and Operations, I'm over operations in, in Flagler County. And part of the operations is just like the Assistant Superintendent here over operations, you over food service, transportation, custodial services, yeah, I'm over plant services, fleet. And so the, the plant service director of our district and I, we meet constantly, because what we do is we do a five-year capital plan. And we go to all of our schools and do a wish list. And so those principals meet with us, and then we'll look at what capital projects that they need to stand up over the next five years. And then we prioritize what the projects we need to stand up. One of the things that we look at first is look at things that will create a safe situation for our students, you know, with the structure of our buildings and then the AC units, we look at things like that before we start giving them the other fluff in terms of capital. So we do that on a yearly, we do it multi-times a year also, over the bus fleet. And we have been in a position where we were ordering ten buses a year to update our fleet. However, with the situation that we're in at this time, you know, I had to reduce that number down to six, because that was going to save us a little over $400,000, because we don't know what the future holds for our budget. And you had another piece to that.
Well, the rest of it was how familiar are with the different fund types, and what would be your priorities for capital project resources currently available to our school district?
Well, I, I do know that in your district, you are getting ready to build another elementary school. And I think we just need to look at our infrastructure and see what our capital needs, our facility needs are. When I was at, when I'm, and the, as the Assistant Superintendent, well, not Assistant Superintendent, Executive Director of Leadership and Operations, what we have done is that we look at the capital needs of our area. I rode around here in April, and your buildings are in good shape. You're doing, whoever is your Assistant Superintendent of Operations, they're doing a good job in regards to standing up our, your buildings. So I would look at the needs of each building, all the facilities, in regards to what the priorities would be.
All right, number four, this is a little shorter sentence. From a district's perspective, explain how student performance standards affect planning and prioritizing of facilities, fiscal, technological, and human resource projects.
Student performance standards and what came after that?
Yeah, as student performance standards, how would they impact the planning and prioritizing of facilities, the fiscal budget, technological, and human resource projects?
That is a good question. First of all, when you are making decisions that, that we are going to work with student performance, we need to look at data, okay? The data is going to drive your decisions on what projects you need to do and what you need to do in terms of human capital. One of the things, as I was looking into Escambia County, there are a lot of resources here to support the performance of students. You have a TISA grant, you have a UNICEF grant, you have Title I grants. And when I was comparing the schools and the school size and the number of employees at each school, I noticed some of your schools have more employees per student. You know, so the student and teacher or student-employee ratio at some of the schools are higher. And what that means is the fact that you're providing more resources in some of your schools. So what I would do based on the data that I see, that's how we would send the resources in terms of human capital to those schools. One of the things as an elementary school principal at a high-title school at one of the districts that I worked at, we had a number of staff members, human capital that the district with Title I funds and our general budget that we utilize. But it was, the honest was on the principal of that building to look at what were the needs of those students based on the data, and that's how you decide whether you're going to have academic coaches such as math coaches based on the data, science coaches, or intervention teachers in those classrooms.
All right, and the last question. Describe your ability to cultivate a disciplined, safe, and orderly school environment.
Well, I think the first, the first thing that we need to do, every student deserves to have a significant adult in their lives. If it weren't for my math teacher in high school, my trike coach in high school, my football coach, I skipped the school because I loved going to school, because I knew I can always have someone at that school that I can go to. So first of all, we need to develop rapport with our students. And that's, and the students need to have an opportunity to have a mentor. In Flagler County, we charge all of our staff members with going out and getting a couple students. I had ten students at an elementary school and a number of students at a high school that I mentored. So that's what we need to do first, mentorship and developing relationships. When I became principal at Tier T Elementary, I have four hundred and fifty students, ninety-seven percent free and reduced lunches. And when I first became the principal, I had my secretary print out the addresses of every student. In the swalding heat on that summer days and weeks, I walked to each home and introduced myself, because the first contact I wanted those families to have with me was going to be positive. So I went to each home to introduce myself, and I say, "Thank you for sending me your best." And so we have to deal with the relationship part. Every school that I have been a part of, I have created a culture that people wanted to come to work. Students wanted to come to school. And that's by developing relationships. And when you look at this entry plan that I have, it says, "Listening, learning, and then you lead." You can't lead when you don't develop a relationship, when you don't know what's going on. So I think that I feel, I believe, I know that by having take-twenty's, developing relationships will be conducive to the improvement of cultures and behavior. If I may say this, if I still have another minute, I had a student, I'm taking too much time? I had a student at Matanzas High School that, when I got there, he was put in jail a number of times, he was wreaking havoc on the campus. I first became the principal there, I asked the dean, "Give me, give me the most challenging kids that you have, tell me their names." And what I did was, I went to Quintel Home and met with his father, sat on the porch, and had a conversation about where is it that you want to see your son, Quintel? He said, "I don't want to see him where my oldest son is at this time." And that student was successful playing football, great athlete, great person. He was a successful student-athlete at Matanzas High School. And that's by mentoring and creating relationships.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Dr. Edler has the next questions regarding student achievement. Be sure the mic, the mic is in front of you.
May I ask him a follow-up question to Mr. Adams?
She wants to know if she can ask a follow-up question to one of Mr. Adams' questions?
All right, okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to say to you first, before I begin my questions, is that I understand your passion and your emotions, because I too come from one of those environments. And when we look at the many, many opportunities that our children have today, and we look back at, we did not have them, but somehow we made it, and it was because of those mentors. So I just wanted you to know that I do understand what you're saying. My questions are probably going to be a little... My questions are probably going to be a little bit longer. I can repeat them as needed, but I too have a passion for children. And so, I will begin with, the district, in my opinion, has many areas that need fixing. It is usually customary for candidates to research facts and figures about the potential job. Assuming that you as well followed this practice, discuss the greatest barrier to a quality education for all children regardless of their life situations or circumstances that you identified. And what are your plans to be the fixer of that barrier?
Well, I think if I were to capsulize this, I would say the biggest barrier is the opportunity gap. We have been chasing the achievement gap since the beginning of time. But we are chasing the symptom of the problem and not the problem. So, we need to make sure that we provide our students with an opportunity to be successful. Let me give you an example. There are a number of students here in Escambia County that do not have access to literature when they are in their homes when they're born. We need to have a cradle-to-career program that we're going to be able to work with these three large hospitals in this area to provide early learning literature in those homes. Also, there are a number of VPK programs here, public and private VPK programs. And if I'm not mistaken, there are 15, seven of which are on probation because they have not reached that 60% kindergarten readiness threshold. We need to put our resources in VPK programs to make sure that we have high-quality teachers in the VPK program that are collaborating and working side by side with the kindergarten teachers and the early learning teachers to provide those students with the opportunity to have a quality, early learning opportunity. When you look at the research, if you look at the percent of students who are not kindergarten-ready, that will be that same group of kids who are not successful on a third grade assessment. I've done a plethora of work in regards to looking at the data and I would like to honor and commend Mr. Thomas for that continuous improvement that they've made over the years. But I'm that person that look at the elephant in the room. I'm that person that says, "We are doing a phenomenal job here, but what about that group that's not learning?" When I disaggregate the data here in Escambia County, there are pockets of students that are not achieving. There are pockets, when you look at the ESSA data, there are pockets of students who's not achieving. We need to provide those students with an opportunity to learn. Every kid, every kid will learn given the opportunity and resources conducive to their learning. We don't learn at the same rate or the same time. When you look in your packet, and I will explain this later, I shared this with you and I will explain this maybe tomorrow, what that is. But we need to provide these students with access and equity of standard-based, high-quality, tier-one instruction as well as interventions. When I was at Tier T, we were a D school. That was unacceptable. We had pockets of students that were successful, but when I was a teacher and when I talk to teachers, when you teaching students, you look at them if they were your own students. We provided intensive interventions for every student in that school based on the gaps. Based on the gaps, not your achievement level. So, we will do, we work with PLCs and we need to group our students in a way in which we provide them with an equitable opportunity to be successful. And I think I answered a whole lot. I'm sorry.
You did well.
When I start talking, I get kind of passionate because it's low-hanging fruit. It's not difficult.
All right, I just want you to know that I have four more questions and I want to make sure that you answer each one of them.
Okay, I'm sorry, I will be more succinct.
That's okay. Explain why you believe or do not believe that there's a strong correlation between neighborhood schools, parental involvement, and academic success or failure of poor children and children of color.
Will you repeat that again, please?
Yes. Explain why you believe or do not believe that there's a strong correlation between neighborhood schools, parental involvement, and academic success or failure of poor children and children of color.
The, I, I, I've been fortunate, I worked in an elementary school on the beachside where it was a more affluent area and it was a little nice little elementary school. And then, I went to Tier T, which is a neighborhood school, 450 students. And you have three buses because everyone else walked to the school. I believe there's a direct correlation with parent involvement in regards to student achievement. One of the things I did at Tier T, because I knew that we could not get parents in our school. And when I first went to Tier T, they would have four dances a year. And I said, "This is unacceptable. We can have parents coming to our schools for dance, but not for a science night, not for a math night, not for a math party." So, that when you look at the research, parental involvement is one of the key indicators of student success. So, I feel that it does have a negative impact if parents are not involved. I think it has a negative impact if parents don't feel like they are welcome into the school. Therefore, what we have to do is we have to take the school to the parents, take the school to the community. When I was the principal at Osceola Elementary, they would bus students from the inner city. You know, and those were the minority students they would bus in there for the inner city. We were not achieving, parents wouldn't come to the school. Students would miss a lot of school. Students were not learning from the inner city. When I became principal at Osceola Elementary, I took my school to the community. I provide tutoring at a recreational center. I walked in those housing developments to talk to the parents, to get them into the school. So, I truly feel that we need to have parents feel like they're included into what we're doing at school. So, we need to be very communicative, we need to talk to them, we need to work with them so they can feel like they are part of our school.
There have been many debates over the causes of the different educational achievement between the various ethnic subgroups. At the forefront of these, of those debates is the common practice of favoritism, cronyism, nepotism, and/or institutional biases. What is your philosophy on whether such practices prevent qualified educators of color from being hired, offered lateral promotions, or being placed in upper-level administrative positions? And what are your plans to correcting this problem?
That was longer than my dissertation.
I know.
Will you repeat that again?
Okay. What I'm really asking you about is that, that common practice of favoritism, cronyism, and nepotism, or institutional biases. So, what are, what is your philosophy on whether those practices prevent educators of color from being hired, offered lateral promotions, or being placed in upper-level administrative positions? And what are your plans to correcting those?
I would just like to start out by saying this, as superintendent of Escambia County, I'm a hired creme de la creme. You know, whatever, race, whatever, ethnic origin, whatever, gender, we have to get the best people in the positions to be, so our students can be successful first. I do know that students achieve higher if they have people in positions that look like them. It is highly important that we have a very diverse staff, instructional staff as well as a support staff. When I look at the demographics of, in your equity report, and I know that there is a disparity between the employees, African-American employees, the Hispanic employees and other versus the student population. We have a large African-American student body and 8% of our students are other and another 8% of them are Hispanic. So, we need to make sure that we do a concerted effort in terms of recruiting a diverse workforce, one. Two, when we advance our employees, we might need to make sure that they have the necessary skills that will be conducive to them being successful in their respective positions. So, what we would do is I have an aspiring leader program in Flagler County. And one of the things that I do, I deliberately and intentionally go out and try to recruit and unfortunately, you know, a lot of the ones that you pull out of the classrooms are your superstars. I would intentionally go out and get the most qualified diverse group of teachers to be that next aspiring leader. We have to create a very diverse pipeline so we can have a succession plan within our district. So, I will be intentional to recruit from within. Also, we don't have to just recruit from within. We can look throughout the state and other states to get high-quality employees, a diverse group of high-quality employees in our district.
It seems that in this district, most, if not all, ESOL centers are placed in low-performance schools. Share with us your experience in improving ESOL students' achievement by placing centers in low-performance schools rather than high-performance schools.
I've never been in a district where we have ESOL centers in one particular school because usually if we have ESOL students, they are spread out in their geographic area. Whichever school they're zone for, that's where they go. Or if they are in a, in a, want to go to a magnet school or go to a different academy, they're doing that. However, I can, and it doesn't just relate to ESOL. I think that students, just like students with disability, they benefit for, from being with students who are, who are not, who are their counterparts, not, you know, in ESOL or students with disability in an exceptional student education program. So, I think that for us to ensure that these students are successful, we need to make sure that we're not grouping these kids together and just, in my humble opinion, we're not grouping, they need to be, have an opportunity to be exposed to their non-ESOL counterparts. So, I don't, I have never experienced that type of grouping. I did read one of your school improvement plans, and I'm sorry, I know this, and it wasn't dealing with ESOL. It was dealing with students who were low-achieving students. And they grouped those students together and that's how they said that those students achieved learning gains. I don't believe that is how you move students along.
Okay, thank you. Last one, and I understand.
No, I'm sorry, Dr. Edler, your time is up.
Oh, time is up. Time is up, I'll save it.
You'll get time tomorrow.
Yes.
So, moving on, Mr. Slaton will now ask questions dealing with board and community relations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
There you go.
Welcome, thank you for coming. As she said, board and community relations, boy, that's a broad one, isn't it? When a new superintendent is hired, we want to make the transition as smooth as possible for everyone. How would you help the education community and the community at large adjust to your new styles of leadership that would come with you being our new superintendent?
At the front of my entry plan, you see, "Listen and learn." And by doing the listening and learning forms, you would find out from the different groups the challenges and the opportunities which exist here in Escambia County. There are a lot of different groups, we need to unify not only the school district. When I say Escambia, I'm talking, speaking about the community. I'm speaking about that we need to, I need to as superintendent, meet with the faith-based groups, the civic groups, the business partners, the parents. The, there's a military council, I think, that was just established between NAS and the school district and meet with that group to have those conversations and to listen to the challenges and opportunities that exist here in Escambia County. Also, when I do my learning, that's when I have to synthesize off the information and work with the executive team and the school board and to determine how we are going to address these situations. When I became the principal at Matanzas High School, the first thing I said when I met with the faculty and staff, "I trust you that you are going to do your job, but I'm not asking you to trust me. I have to earn your trust." And you earn that trust by being visible, being transparent, and being able to have these conversations with all the stakeholders to ensure that we all are going to work together to ensure that Escambia County will be successful. And I used, and I also do this when I, the listening sessions, I have take 20s that I'd meet with different groups and employees as well.
Okay, thank you. Like the superintendent, school board members don't like surprises either. How would you ensure the school board is informed on important matters?
Everything is important, you know, and I can tell you about my experiences at, in Flagler County. And what I did to ensure that school board members were aware of what's going on particularly as if it's going to hit the newspaper or you're going to hear from a community member. So, we would, if it was something that, I was the district safety specialist as well as a number of other positions that I had. And if there's something in terms of threats that occurred on our campus, we, I'd use, we'd use the, one of those, the app so they can get that information immediately, then they knew that, "Don't respond, but this is just, this could hit the newspaper." We do text messages if something happens in the school. We also pick up the phone call. One of the things that I would do as superintendent of Escambia County, I will have a standing weekly meeting with each board member so we can talk about the challenges and opportunities that are going on in our district. We can look at, you know, some barriers. We could talk about what information you're receiving from your, the teachers and your constituents. We can talk about what I see that could be potential problems. So, we would do that as well, but definitely we will communicate via an app that we do in Flagler County, text message, phone calls. And we always, the most important thing is that we communicate, communicate, communicate with the board members so you can, and sometimes you cannot out-communicate technology, you know. you cannot out-communicate technology, you know, and so, there are going to be situations that occur, but it will be totally unintentional, but I would definitely get, try to get in front of any potential situation that occurs.
So, are you saying the rumor mill is faster than the telephone?
Well, Facebook is faster than telephone.
Yes, sir, isn't it? What methods of communicating with parents have you found most effective, and how would you encourage and leverage parental involvement?
There are multiple ways that we communicate, and you cannot communicate with parents enough. So, we have an automotive system in our district that we utilize to communicate with faculty, staff, and our parents. We also have a district website, as Escambia County does, and each school has their website. We utilize that as well. We also have texts. We communicate with our parents through a text, automated text, if we needed to get information to them quickly. Two years ago, I stood up, "Here coming the bus," for transportation, because we had a lot of issues with transportation prior to me coming in this position, that a bus is going to be 30 minutes late, or hour late, and they were never communicated with. So, I stood up a program with our transportation to give parents notification immediately if, in fact, the bus was going to be late. So, those are ways that we communicate. In terms of parental involvement, it depends on where you are geographically, the level of parental involvement that you have. I've had the opportunity to work on all levels and at different types of schools. So, some schools that I've worked at, you have to take your school to the community. I did that when I was assistant principal at Seabreeze High School. I did it when I was the principal at Osceola Elementary. Some parents feel disenfranchised, so you have to make them feel like they're included in the daily situations and decisions that are made in our schools. So, I would take the school to the district, I mean, to the neighborhood, and I would make random calls. One of the things that I do as a principal, I did as a principal, I had parents, our teachers, in the first two weeks of school, call every student on their roster, every student's parent on the roster to say, "Hi, I am so glad that I have you." So, you're just developing those relationships and providing opportunities to have different functions at your schools, like math night, science night, et cetera.
Thank you. Everyone will want to get to know the new superintendent. How do you approach and build cooperative partnerships among businesses, civic, and ethnic groups?
And I mentioned this earlier, in terms of the listening and learning sessions, I would go out in the community and meet with different groups, and some of these groups are, have reservations about coming into our schools. I have no reservations about going into your neighborhood. When I came here in April, I parked, initially, I Googled the Pensacola High School. I went to Pensacola High School, then I started doing, using my GPS, and I went to Montclair, and I walked around that neighborhood with no problem. And I talked to some of the people, "How you like this area? How you like the school?" They didn't know. I said, "I'm thinking about moving my children," which I don't have children of school age here, and having conversations. And people love Escambia County schools. They love Escambia County schools. So, I would go out, and I would be very visible, and be part of the chamber, be part of other civics groups, be part of faith-based organizations, having conversations. I will assure you this, as superintendent of Escambia County School, you have 58 schools. Every nine weeks, I will visit every school. I would take two days a week, and my day would start out in the schools. That's how you're going to build rapport. I will be able to talk to parents when they're dropping their students off. I will be in the neighborhoods and attending community functions to be able to communicate with our families. So, I need to be visible, transparent, and I need to model the expectations that I have of our workforce. Did I answer your whole question?
That was good. Thank you. Visibility, we just talked a little bit about that. How do you engage, how have you engaged the community of your district, and how have you increased invisibility of the school system and its needs? Needs.
One of the things that, and I can talk on multiple levels, but this is one of the things that I'm most proud of. We had, when I was the principal at T R T, there was not a lot of parent involvement, wasn't a lot of community involvement. And so, I reached out to our local colleges. We have Bethune-Cookman University, University of Central Florida, and we have Daytona Beach Community College. And I asked them if they would come in and tutor and mentor our students. So, they would come in, and we would, they would tutor our students during the school day, during lunch, they'd come and read. We had an after-school program that was Food Brings Hope, that I worked collaboratively with one of the community members to start that. I was one, I was on the ground roots of starting that for elementary schools. I was the first elementary school that had that. It was Food Brings Hope. Farouk Husini is the person who runs that. And what they did was, they provided us with assistance for tutoring during the school day, after the school day, and we took a lot of trips. I worked very closely with the president at Bethune-Cookman to provide incentive programs for our students. We would have a lunch with the president once a month. We also would be able to take different trips that was paid for by the school. Am I answering your question? This is another program that I did to incentivize our students intrinsically, that our kids didn't have reading materials. So, I engaged the parents and to come into our schools, and I gave students books during, because of academic regression during those times like summer, Christmas, and spring break, we would give them books. We had a reading counts incentive program that we intrinsically tried to motivate these kids to want to read, because if you read X amount of books, we're going to give you a bicycle. We, the year that I left the school, we earned the 21st Century Grant, and I was going to have a GED program on my school campus after school for the parents. However, that soon year, I ended up moving. So, we need to just be very collaboratively, work very collaboratively with our parents and our community members to get them engaged and feel included in our schools.
Thank you, sir.
All right. If you need to take a drink of water, go right ahead. Mr. Fetzko is going to be asking you some questions about instructional leadership.
Good morning, Dr. Johnson.
Good morning, sir.
These questions tend to be a little more technical, but you'll get through it with no problem, I'm sure. How would you evaluate the instructional program, and how would you make changes to an instructional program? Or how did you evaluate an instructional program and modify it to your needs?
First of all, we have to look at the ROI, the return on investment. What is the intended outcome that you're looking for with its curriculum materials or with these programs? And then, once you look and see whether or not you have achieved the, or not, the intended outcome, you do one of two things. You do what we call purposeful abandonment. If it ain't working, get rid of it. If it's working, we need to be able to utilize the materials. When I, the reason that I was, went to get my doctorate was because that was my first year in an elementary school. And as an elementary school principal, you have to be very strong in curriculum and instruction. So, actually, my dissertation was in reading instruction. And the thing that I did was that I looked at research-based programs, research-based instructional practices, and that's what I utilized. One of the things, like small group instruction, that PLCs, we look at those, and we are working with our teachers to ensure that all our kids will learn. I did the, we call it flexibility grouping. And what that is, is we're looking at students, we had a two-hour reading block, and we looked at students and their gaps, and that's how we grouped our kids through our hour of small group instruction. So, I think that we need to look at the strategies, instructional strategies that we're utilizing, and looking at instructional materials, and seeing if we're getting a return on investment. And if we're not, we need to do that purposeful abandonment. One of the things I also noticed is the fact that sometimes we don't provide our teachers with the correct and necessary professional development, so they can use the materials and instructional strategies to his fullest. So, we need to make sure that we provide the correct professional development.
Thank you. How do you balance the needs of special populations such as ESC students or ELL students and students traditionally referred to as gifted and talented? What have you done to address the diverse needs of student populations in your district?
We have to, when we want to ensure that all students are successful, we need to essentially individualize instruction. And let me talk about the acceleration piece. One of the things that I did at Matanzas High School, we had a lot of underrepresented students who were not able to take dual enrollment classes and/or advanced classes. The other high school that was in our district, they had an IB program, and we did not have IB or ACE program at our school. Therefore, I wanted to attract those students who were going on a track to go to college. So, I got permission from our district to start dual enrollment for those underrepresented students. And when I say underrepresented, when you're in ninth grade, you can't drive, and we didn't have a college close to the school. So, I started a dual enrollment program at our school, and I don't know the exact numbers, but I think in one year, I increased the participation in dual enrollment by 63%, because we had students starting to take dual enrollment classes at a young age. Also, those students who are normally, do not take the advanced tracks, but have potential to go into honors courses, we started, I started AVID program on our campus. And AVID, you know, is advancement via individual determination. We started that program, so a lot of students who were underrepresented, they were able to take the honors track. Another thing that we did, I think that is necessary, because we have a lot of students that we're missing at an early age, we need to look at the district-wide second-grade gifted screening, because we can start those students on an advanced track very early. When we look at students, and I'm just using students with disability, one of the things that I've found in my experiences is that our students, they go through the MTSS process, and they get this intensive intervention and a lot of supports. Well, if, and when we are going through the MTSS process, that is trying to close the gap to get you out of that process. However, there are going to be certain times that students might need to go into a special program or is designated as a student with a disability. What happens traditionally is they get less support. They get less support when they are identified, so we need to make sure that we're standing up intensive supports for our students with disability. When you look at the data here in Escambia County, that is a ESA group that is not achieving. And we can close that gap if we intentionally and laser-focus on closing that achievement gap by providing them with additional resources that they receive prior to getting into the program. And I think that, and I'm not 100% sure what type of continuum of services that you provide for your students, but we need to make sure that we're providing continuum of services for those students.
All right. Thank you. What do you think the role of extracurricular activities should be in the school system? Mentioned football, so.
I think that, I believe, truly believe that we should have extracurricular and co-curricular activities in our schools. When I was the principal at Matanzas High School, and I would meet the little ninth graders, I would say, "How you doing? Other than a scholar, what else are you going to do for Matanzas High School?" I think that having extra and co-curricular have kids feel inclusive in our school, because they have a group that they can do, whether it's performing arts, whether it's a club, whether it's football, and I know, don't know why anybody would play that sport, it's a little rough on the brain, but, you know, but you would, I believe that it plays a role, and that is a way that students can connect to the school, because I don't feel, I feel every student should have an opportunity to participate in a program or in something other than just being a scholar.
What is the role of career technical education, and how have you expanded this role in any of your previous positions?
I like the term cradle to career. Every student, we need to ensure that every student is college and career-ready. Everyone is not going to go to college, but we need to make sure that we are going to provide students with an opportunity to graduate from high school in a career. I have looked at the academies, you have over 70 academies. They all align with the workforce here in Escambia County. When you look at, in your packet, I have an impact report in there, and we have flagships in Flagler County, which are essentially academies. And we work very closely with the workforce development, our local and regional employees, look at the businesses, to see what the needs are in that area, so we can provide students an opportunity to have a pipeline from classroom to career. Over the last couple of years, what I've done, we have the Flagler Technical College, and we, at one of our local high schools, we have a fire academy. We had students who had to leave Flagler County to go to another county to get their EMT certification. We stood up an EMT certification program at our Florida Flagler Technical College, and actually, last year was the first group that went through, and we have two students who have gotten the job in the fire, local fire departments. Also, working with our local business partners, we knew that there was a need for heavy equipment operators. We started that program at our Flagler Technical College as well, and we have, so we are working very closely with our education department, our educational foundation department, and our local businesses and community members to see what the workforce needs are, and we are establishing those academies in our school, and I think is essential for us to do, establish those in our schools.
And my last question, what types of programs have you found to be the most effective in improving student learning? What makes them effective? How do you evaluate that effectiveness, and how do you communicate the effectiveness to stakeholders?
The first piece of that question is.
The most effective, what programs have you found the most effective in improving student learning?
The programs that I have found most effective in Escambia, you use iReady, which is a prescriptive program, you do that diagnostic, and then the students have a curriculum that they go through, and I think minimally, we're looking that students are on that program for 45 minutes per week. And you have that in math and in reading, I think, iReady. When we looked at the data and compared it to the FSA, it is 85% reliable. So, if you participate in, if you use iReady with fidelity, that, I think that is a great program, and you also use 360. I think that is a great program as well, and to assess where the students are. Another thing that I think that we need to do, or we need to have formative assessments in all curricular areas. And the reason I say formative assessments, because when I look at formative assessments, I look at, it's like taking, going and get a checkup from your doctor. We can diagnose where those students are. And we need to make sure that our teachers are utilizing that data to drive their instruction. A strategy that I think is very, and I know you didn't ask strategy, but I think that, I know, I believe, I feel, I've experienced that we need to ensure that everyone is using small group instruction to individualize, individualize the instruction for our students.
All right, and then, and this is an important part for us, if I've got a couple of minutes left.
Go on green.
Okay. Marketing has been the thing that, and so that being said, how do you communicate that effectiveness to the stakeholders? How do they know that this is working or this is good? How do people get the good results given to them?
First of all, with that, we have to communicate the vision of the school board and the school district. So the vision has to be communicated through the, what our strategic plan looks like. This is the goal. And our strategic plan needs to be delivered to our community members and our stakeholders. We have an impact report that we give to our community members yearly in Flagler County. And what that is, is we're telling the community what impact they are having on our school. And then the community is telling the impact that we're having. So we would share what our vision is for our school district. And then, at the end, we will go and say, this is where we are. This is what we've done. So we can do that during our, we call it common ground meetings with our community members.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Now it's my turn. And I'm going to ask you a few questions, basically about general and personal leadership. You've covered a lot of things in your answers already. But just give us a thumbnail sketch of your personal experiences, which you've kind of been doing all along. Your pivotal belief on public education? And which of these experiences prepared you to be our next superintendent?
Would you ask me the first?
The first part was just give us a brief thumbnail sketch of your professional experiences, your belief in public education? And then which of these experiences prepare you to be our superintendent?
I don't have a traditional work experience like a lot of other educators have. I've worked in education for thirty-two years and all of those years have been in Florida. And my first district, I was in Volusia County. We had sixty-seven thousand students in Volusia County. And that's where I had my first principalship. That's where I started working. That's where I started coaching. That's where I was an assistant principal. So after I had a short stint in the N F L, I came back home. And I didn't know what I was going to do. Because all my life, I made money with my body, free education, made a little bit of money in football. And so the coach at Seabreeze High School asked me, would you like to coach? Okay, I'll coach. And so I started coaching at Seabreeze High School and they gave me a job. I was a business math teacher and I taught math, algebra. And I said, well, this is just going to be a stepping stone for me to go to college, to be a college coach. After the impact that I saw that I had on those students, the impact that I had on those athletes, the, how we, I was able to bring those athletes together to reach a common goal. I said, I like this. The impact that I had on students, when the light bulb came on, when they knew what the Pythagorean theorem was. I like this. After six years teaching math, I had an opportunity to go and coach college football. I said, no, thank you. I found my niche. And so from that point, I knew I had a purpose. And my purpose was to ensure that I create the next generation that will have better opportunities than I had. And I had some great opportunities. And I think I've done very well for myself. I believe every student will learn if given the opportunity, the time, the resources that will be conducive to them learning. We can create a generations, a generation of doctors, lawyers, if we, if we trust and provide the time and give them the resources and the opportunities they need to be successful. Public education is a beautiful thing. And I think that we need to be able to market and brand ourselves Y Escambia County Public Schools. Show them all the good things. Show the community all the great things we're doing. Have the community part of that. And I feel that if we create that trusting, transparent relationship with all of our diverse communities, we will show them why Escambia.
Thank you. Based on your knowledge and your homework of our school district and community, what do you believe should be the top, two top priorities for our school system?
Top two?
Top two?
Number one, early learning. We need to focus on early learning because I think that is going to be the ground roots of where those students will be. That is going to be the, the structure that is going to provide those students with the best opportunity to be successful and graduate from high school. And two, acceleration. We need to make sure, I looked at your data. You have a number of students who are taking level three courses. Level three courses isn't that good, but a small percentage of your students are taking dual enrollment. We have about, we had about nine hundred and fifty students graduate from Flagler County schools last year. Ninety-five of them graduated with an A A degree prior to getting a high school diploma. So we need to look at acceleration. And part of that also acceleration, we need to look at graduation. Malcolm has done a phenomenal job over the five years. They have shown significant increase, right now the graduation rate is eighty-five percent. And I would look at graduation one hundred. Because I wouldn't want my kid to be part of that fifteen percent. So one of the things I would look at also is coming up with strategies on how we could get one hundred percent of our students to graduate. I know that was three, but acceleration, graduations.
Kind of the same. Thank you. We are a choice district. Year after year, many of our schools receive many more requests for enrollment than they have capacity to accommodate. How would you address the issue that desired schools are not available?
First of all, when we look at capacity, you know, we, and I'm not sure if it's the same here, but when we look at capacity, we look at ninety-five percent capacity to make sure that if students are moving into the area, they can attend their zone school. So if we have choice and parents want to send their kid to a school because of aviation or send their student to school for athletics, you know, I feel that we need to embrace choice. However, there is going to be at a time when we are at capacity that we cannot open those schools up for any additional people coming in. Now, if it's choice because of different programs that one school has compared to another school, one of the things that we need to look at is geographic, looking at maybe we need to stand up another program, like an academy. I know you have a number of schools that have a culinary program. And so we might need to look at opening up additional programs at, or academies at additional schools.
Thank you. You will be hired after the school year has begun. Employees are in place. Covid protocols are in place. The strategic plan has been approved. What steps would you take to create a hundred day plan for our district? And you've kind of gone over some of the things you would do, so.
Right, and I think with the things that I've already talked about in terms of listening, learning, and looking at the opportunity and challenges, I would have to work very closely with the school board to look at what the vision is of the school board. The strategic plan, if I'm not mistaken, is like an extension to, because in twenty twenty? So it's like an extension, so, and it's very comprehensive. And I've gone through it multiple times and it's a great document. But the thing about it, I would meet with the school board members individually and as a group to talk about what the vision that you have for Escambia County School District. Also, to go over the strategic plan and seeing what we need to do in regards to continuing to achieve those goals and look at the strategies that we need to do, have with the strategic plan. Also, I would have to work very closely with the executive team, the current superintendent, to find out the challenges and the opportunities and the low hanging fruit that we have here in Escambia County. This is a great place, a great place. And I think it's right there on the cusp of being the best school district in the state of Florida. So I will work very collaboratively with the stakeholders.
Thank you. And you've kind of alluded to this as well. We are a military community. What suggestions do you have to strengthen our relationship with Naval Air Station Pensacola? As the superintendent, how would you work to win back the military families who are currently making other educational choices for their families?
First of all, I would be an active part of the military council. So we can look at what are the challenges and what they perceive as opportunity for their students, for their children. Also, in our packet, I received a letter from Captain Timothy.
Gincella.
Gincella and Carissa. I will work very closely with them to find out why do they have this feeling, whether it's perceived or not, about our schools? And what we can do to stand up a more robust program that they feel will be conducive to their students and their children coming to our school district? I know that there are about four thousand military students in our school district. And we need to make sure that we can market and provide opportunities for those military families to feel comfortable and confident that we're going to provide a quality, robust education for their children.
Thank you. That was my last question. So now, is there any additional information that you would like to share with us?
Just that, I've, in my thirty-two years of working in education, I've had the opportunity to work from the buses to the budget. I've had a broad-based experience and I would not change it for the world. One of the best things that ever happened to me was my seven knee surgeons playing football. You're like, why is that? Because I would never have had this opportunity to impact young children's lives as I have for the last thirty-two years. I've worked on every level, including the district level. My position as the executive director of, the director of leadership and operation. I'm like, what is my position? Of leadership and operations. You know, I was the second person in charge. We did not have deputy superintendents in our district or assistant superintendents. So I had an opportunity to sit in the seat as a superintendent when he was not in place. Anytime you go from a teacher to an assistant principal, assistant principal, there are going to be challenges and it's going to be a learning curve. But I will work tirelessly and with the school board and the executive team and the community members to find out what is the vision of the district and the vision of the school board? And work to make sure that I make that come, that vision come to fruition. The, this is a tough decision. This is going to be the biggest decision that the school board has made. But I will assure you that I would serve up and serve down. I work with humility. I am a servant leader. I'm a collaborative leader. I'm an open door, and I always, I always have an open door policy. Unfortunately, a lot of times I'm not going to be sitting in my office. You can find me in the community or at the schools. But this is a difficult decision and you have a lot of candidates. But I know, I believe, I will, I can assure you that I will be the ingredient that Escambia County School needs to go from good to where they are now, to great, to being one of the best districts in the state of Florida.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for the school board members?
I will ask tomorrow.
Okay. Would it be appropriate for Dr. Edler to ask her last question now, if you'd like to, Dr. Edler? You've got, we ran out of time, we have a little time left here. Hold that mic over.
In this district, our pandemic is the Good Old Boys Club. Convince me that you will reject membership in the Good Old Boys Club and that you will lead this school district objectively with the major focus of academic success for all children and a balance of diversity and inclusion in every aspect.
Well, first of all, I would like to start out by saying that if I'm selected as superintendent of Escambia County Schools, I'm coming with a vision to ensure all students will graduate college and career ready. When I look at the data, there's over sixteen percent of your elementary school students and middle school students who are absent twenty-one days or more. I need to figure out how I will be able to mitigate that gap because my leadership will be quantifiable. And so when I look at that, what can I do? Because you can't teach to an empty seat. So we need to have programs and incentive programs in place to ensure these students will come to school. Also, when I look at the ESA subgroups, there are a lot of schools that are on the T S I list or the C S I list because of the subgroups. I need to be able to look at the, and dig deep into the data to find out why those students are achieving the way in which they are achieving. Because as the superintendent of Escambia County, you know, I expect the school board to create a strategic plan that's going to be conducive for all students to be successful. And that's what I would be evaluated on. So I will assure you that I will do work very hard to mitigate those gaps to ensure all students will learn.
Thank you. So we have completed our questions. Thank you again so much for your interest and participating in this process. This evening, after this, you'll get to go do tours of the area. Of course, you've seen a lot of it. But this evening, you'll be participating in a modified meet and greet. We're going to do it virtually. And I remind those watching that if you have a question that you want to have answered, to please go to the district website. There is a button there where you can click and submit your question. Tomorrow, you'll get to come to the other school board building and meet us individually in our offices. And again, let the F S B A staff know if you have any questions or concerns. They're here to answer questions for you. And so if you have no other questions?
Thank you for this privileged opportunity.
Thank you. And now we will have a break.